Meeting of the Columbia County Planning and Zoning Commission to order. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Henderson will lead us in the pledge.
Help out with us. Lord, we thank you for getting another beautiful day in Columbia County, warm and sunny day. We want to thank you for the many blessings that you shower down upon us, paid in this country that we live in. We ask that you look over our first responders that look after us, our EMS, our firemen, our law enforcement. We ask that you look over our proceedings tonight and you guide us, you help us to come to the proper decision, right thing to do for us, this community, rise. All these things in Jesus' name, ask.
Pledge allegiance. By United States of America, public, a nation.
Thank you, be seated. If I could please remind you to, or remind you to please silence your cell phones. Gentlemen, you've had, we do have a full quorum here tonight of all five commissioners present. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the minutes from our June 18th meeting. If you have no changes or revisions that you'd like to submit to this body, I'd need a motion for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the minutes passes 5-0. Gentlemen, we also have had a chance to review the agenda. Mr. Vice Chair, I believe we have one additional item.
We have one item to add, H2E2 preliminary plat for Crawford Creek 9.
Okay. Are there any other additional items? Seeing none, we'll need a motion for approval with the additional item.
Make a motion to approve the agenda with the added item.
Do your second.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the agenda with the additional item of Crawford Creek 9 passes 5-0. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on July 21st, 2020 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Carol Harden and she'll give you a request to speak for them. We're less formal in these chambers. If you'd like to speak on an item that is in our public hearing section tonight, please raise your hand. We'll call you up to the mic and give you three to five minutes to give your, give us your opinion or additional information. We'll also have an opportunity for you to address the body during the public speaking portion of our, of the meeting at the end of this, if you have something other than agenda item you'd like to address. That being said, Mr. Butler, our local massage therapy professional will give us a presentation on a massage operator's license proposal for Elizabeth Saberth.
I don't know if I would say professional. I've been forced into doing this, we'll put it that way. So this is a request for a little cyber skin care and massage, for mobile massage only from 4779 Brookwood Drive. It meets all the requirements of the licensing and staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, you have any questions to staff? Seeing none on the motion to approve, deny her to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the massage operator's license, Elizabeth Saberth.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, we have a temporary use authorization for tax map 29 parcel 024 Romeo presented as information only.
That's correct. This is for 13 summer construction trailers out at Wadit Business Park where Amazon is being constructed, approved on June 17th, 2020. Shows the location of the property off of Discovery Drive and Alliance Drive. And the small little rectangles you see all through there are for all the construction trailers for this site. It is a large building, we'll put it that way. Again, staff approved this back and that's temporary use authorization.
And I heard earlier this week, we're going to have five stories at 250,000 square feet a story. Is that correct?
That sounds correct.
Wow. That is big. Ms. Bolti, conceptual plan for Crawford Creek South Phase 9.
Yes, sir. This is a revision to a concept plan that was previously approved March 5th, 2020. This is for property off William Smith Boulevard, currently zoned, PUD planned unit development. This is the location of this section of Crawford Creek and the previously approved plan from March 5th. Now, this section of the PUD for Crawford Creek allowed for a mix of 50, 58, and 65-foot wide lots. That mix was not broken down or specified really at the zoning stage, so each section of this development has come back for a concept review. The concept plan for this section included what were specified as 62 and 68-foot lots that would follow the requirements for the 60 and 65-foot lots outlined in the PUD document. When the preliminary plat came in, it was noted that several of these lots did not meet either the frontage or the width of the minimum building line for those lot standards. The applicants are therefore requesting to revise the designation of these lot widths to match what they're submitting with the preliminary plat. So the lots you see highlighted there are the ones that are changing. The red lots would now be designated as 50-foot lots and the additional kind of light blue lots are additional 58-foot lots above what was originally in the concept plan. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, you have any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the revised conceptual plan for Crawford Creek 9.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, architectural review for Sprint Food Stores.
This is an architectural review at 1325 Atherton Harlem Road, currently zoned C2. This is a request from back in 2017 when the property was rezoned. There's a condition that the elevation had to come out before planning commission and it had to be either brick stuck over stone with metal on the roof. This shows the location of the property out at Pumpkin Center. Plat plan itself was approved about a month ago, the actual elevation of the building. So you have the brick that you can see here that's kind of red, and then you also have some metal along the rooftop. Kind of the only issue from staff, it was a polished concrete masonry unit, not, it's not stone, however, it does approximate a kind of limestone terrazzo finish. So staff is comfortable with that, I mean, in that condition. Staff recommends approval of the request.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the architectural review.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries 5-0. Ms. Bolti, preliminary plat for Kingsbrook.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for Section 1 of Kingsbrook. It involves multiple parcels located off Rosemont Road and Berks Mountain Road totaling just over 81 acres, currently zoned RA residential agricultural. This is the location of the existing parcels, again, off Rosemont Road and Berks Mountain Road. And the aerial of the site largely undeveloped. There are a couple of existing houses at the front of the property on Rosemont Road. Those are previously subdivided lots from the same parent parcel. The plan includes 11 residential lots, with it being RA. They are larger lots. The smallest lot size is 3.67 acres. This is basically shifting the lot lines from the previous individual subdivision to provide all of the lots with access from the new public road you see down the middle. These lots would all be served by individual wells and septic systems. A Level 3 soil survey has been completed but was denied by the Health Department. The applicants did meet with the Health Department on Tuesday and are in the process of completing a Level 4 survey in the hopes of getting septic systems approved for these lots. Minimum building setbacks for this property are 75 feet from the center line of the roads and 10 feet from the side property lines, 25 feet from the rear property lines. Staff is recommending approval of the preliminary plat.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is not a public hearing, but I believe the developers here have a question. Mr. Ivy, would you mind coming up and give us your name and address for the record? We know you, but some of these fine folks might not.
Mark Ivy, 730 Stonecrest Lane, Atherton, Georgia.
I mean, if the lots aren't perking, what?
They do perk. The problem is they're, it's like all of Columbia County, the soils, a lot of the soils will require what they call an advanced treatment unit. It wouldn't, it would take more than just a conventional septic tank and drain field. So instead of spending $6,500 to put in a septic tank and drain field, you might spend 15,000 to 30,000 to do one of these advanced treatments. So the reason we're going to go back into a Level 4 is in hopes of finding soil on the lot so we can afford a conventional. But in meeting with the Health Department and our soil scientists, we talked at length about advanced treatment systems and what those look like, what those cost, and which ones would be.
I've got, my parents lived out at Lake Oconee and they had to put one in on their lot and basically it pumps water out to the drain. That pure by the time the waste material gets cycled through. That mostly because of the mountain.
It's just the type of soil that's out there. You know, even when we built our house and some of the surrounding houses out there, you know, the soil scientists, we originally looked at it, said, oh, these soils may require an advanced treatment unit. But when we got ready to do the drain field where we actually put the drain fields on these lots, we were able to find suitable soil to do conventional. So that's the hope here, too. This site is pretty thick. They cut the, thinned the timber off of it probably four or five years ago and it's kind of grown back up thick with, between those trees and so it's kind of difficult for them to get in there and hunt around. But he's going to go back out there and spend some more time and hopefully find, hopefully find what we can get through.
Best is. All right. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Kingsbrook, subject to interdepartmental comments.
Do your second.
My second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Bolti, Crawford Creek 9.
Yes, sir. This is a preliminary plat for the section of Crawford Creek we just saw the revised concept plan for. Again, this is off William Smith Boulevard. It is 59 lots on 23.9 acres. This is the location of this section, off William Smith Boulevard, and the preliminary plat. This is 59 single-family lots. The minimum lot size is 7,750 square feet with an average lot size of 8,773 square feet. Front setbacks are 18 feet from the right of way. The PUD document actually requires 15. Water utility required the increase to the 18 feet to meet their requirements for separation from the water lines. Side and rear setbacks are a minimum of 10 feet from the property lines per zoning conditions. Sidewalks and street trees are required on both sides of the road and 9.73 acres of open spaces provided in this section. Approval of this was contingent on the revised concept plan, which we did just approve earlier tonight, so staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? It's not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Crawford Creek 9.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion?
With conditions.
With the, with the, with the conditions?
With conditions.
There aren't conditions on it.
There aren't any?
There aren't? I thought there was one. Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Motion.
My bad.
Hold. Okay. All right.
I'm trying to be the steward of the, of the meeting and I got the wrong.
Steward of the.
Wrong one.
All right.
Pulled up here. My apologies.
Long day. Any discussion?
Fire me.
All in favor? Motion to approve, carries 5-0. All right, we'll move into our public hearing items for the evening. Mr. Butler, file RZ 200701.
This is a request for a major PUD revision at 1060 Peninsula Crossing. The revision is to revise building setbacks for our proposed fence, zone planning development. Shows the location of the property, it's on the north side of Peninsula Crossing. And currently zoned, planning a development, it's within River Island. As everything around it is also zoned PUD. This area view of the site, and again, there's actually a house being built there right now, so it looks a little different than that. Again, the existing site, also the plat of the property. So the issue that we're presented with here is that there is a retaining wall, goes basically right there, is within the building setback of 10 feet. That can be six feet high within that setback. Right now, it is higher than that currently. There is a condition that kind of speaks to that. The applicant is requesting to put a fence on top of that, which will then raise the height even higher than that, so it'll be above the six feet height that's embedded within that, within that setback. So if you go to the next slide, you've got the kind of, the rationale from the applicant is that they want to be able to have their kids back here. This does go down to the river, it's a little steep, so it wouldn't really be that great for children, according to them. According with the landscape plan that's presented here, there is a condition to keep this landscape plan mostly intact as they go, as they could build the house. Overall, this is kind of a minor intrusion into the setback. We're talking about four feet into it. It's, the landscaping will help to kind of soften that whole area. Again, there will be a condition that speaks to that. This shows the existing wall as of about two weeks ago. And again, we can see it is a little high at the back there. Again, staff does recommend approval of conditions. Our exposed height cannot be more than six feet high within the building setback. Certain occupants will not be issued until this revision is taken place. And the proposed landscape plan will be substantially adhered to. Insulation will require approval by the Columbia County Landscapes. The reduction in the building setback only applies to retaining wall and fence. And stormwater has a condition that the revised grading plan showing the height of the retaining wall will be required. That includes staff recommendation.
Okay. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
Ian Vincent, 7318 Canterbury Drive, Evans, Georgia. This is into that just a little bit, I think the wall, six foot is the max that we can be and that will be that high. And we're going to put a wrought iron rail around the top of that, you know. It'll be attractive and, and I think it'll actually won't even be noticed because it's mostly in the back, but on the riverside. It goes out about 25 feet from the back and about 40 feet wide and then comes across, we'll have a gate there so the, you know, keep the children in that general area. It actually needs that because there's no, no way to get, to get out the back with the kids unless that, that rail goes up. So it's almost impossible to not do it. I don't know, unless we just bring it over the four foot, make it a little bit smaller, it could be done, but you know, I think, I think it'd be very attractive. I don't think it'll take away from anything.
Is it going to be like a patio rail or is it going to be a?
It needs to be five feet high.
Five feet.
Around that area. We would like to come up a little further if possible, but if not, we just fence that one little area for the children, is what we're trying to do.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ 200701, major PUD revision. It's 060 Peninsula Crossing.
Do your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Mr. Butler, file RZ 200702, major PUD revision, tax map 065.
Thank you. This is a recurring theme. We have another PUD revision to revise building setbacks for our proposed pool though, this time, at 1,003 Mansford Lane, again, currently zoned, planning a development over in Riverwood. Shows the location of the property in Middleton at Riverwood Plantation. Again, currently zoned, planning a development as Riverwood is. An area view of the site. Now, you do see that it has this, this road that goes into it. We'll be talking about that here in a moment. Also the existing site and a plat of the property. And then on the next one, well, this shows the proposed pool location. The setbacks within, within this development are 20 feet from the rear property line. The proposal is to reduce that down to 10 feet, which you can see here for the pool. The pool actually not encroach into that, but it's to kind of give it a little bit of, a little bit of room in case something happens. In terms of impacts to neighbors or anything, it meets the side setbacks. Behind this property is a, an HOA green space, so it doesn't impact anyone behind them. In terms of the, the property itself, as I told you before, has that road in front. That is a common area that they can't go into for development, so they are kind of squeezed in on the property itself, even though it is a larger property. In terms of any concerns from staff, we do have a condition that does require an easement encroachment agreement. I will be, will be required unless you approve prior to issues of building permit for the pool. Overall, staff recommends approval with that one condition, staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information?
No.
All right. Please begin with your name and home address for us.
Trevor Barnes, 1,003 Mansford Lane in Evans, Georgia. As he, Mr. Butler mentioned, kind of cramped on space in the yard. Got a big front yard, but it's found out just recently, it's really not mine. But I've been cutting the grass anyway, so just not a lot of space back there and we're kind of going through the process to try to determine what the next step is going to be. Get approval, go through the easement encroachment, go from there.
Gentlemen, any questions? Thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny her to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ 200702. Do the conditions.
Do your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Ms. Bolti, file RZ 200703.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning off Baker Place Road from RA residential agriculture and M1 light industrial to PRD planned residential development. This is the location of the property. It does cross Baker Place Road. The majority of the property is on the eastern side of Baker Place Road between Baker Place and Canterbury Farms, with a smaller portion on the west side heading up north and touching I-20. Again, they're currently split zoned. The M1 zoning is a relic of a county initiated rezoning from 70s. Remainder of the property is zoned RA. Canterbury Farms to the east is a planned unit development. Most of the surrounding additional properties are RA with the exception of the R2 property to the south, which is beginning development for a subdivision on that parcel. This is the existing site, again, undeveloped trees, basically. This is looking down Baker Place Road. And this is the proposed concept plan for this project. This proposal includes 765 lots. It is a mix of single-family and what are being called single-family attached units. The light blue lots on this plan are the village lots, which have a 45-foot minimum width and a minimum lot size of 5,500 square feet. The yellow lots are the garden lots with a 55-foot minimum width and a minimum lot size of 6,200 square feet. And the orange lots are the estate lots with a 65-foot minimum width and a minimum lot size of 7,800 square feet. There are two types of attached units shown on this plan. The two-unit attached are shown in the red. The applicant did submit a proposal to revise those lots on Tuesday afternoon to remove the two-unit attached lot type from this development in favor of putting additional village lots where you currently see the, the red two-unit attached. The purple lots are the three-to-four unit, single-family attached. Those do meet the definition for townhouses under the county code. The applicants have proposed multiple access points into this development. You can see three entrances on Baker Place Road, as well as a future connection to Canterbury Farms Parkway and to existing parcels to the south. Multiple park areas are proposed with the plan, including a central amenity area with a pool, clubhouse, and activity field, which is here on the southern end of the property. There is an existing cemetery in the center of the property as well. The applicants are using the amenity and the park areas as part of their, their support for their request for reducing the setbacks in this project. The PRD code does specify a 10-foot minimum side setback unless the character of the development supports a reduction by the Board of Commissioners. 50-foot buffers will be required on all sides of this project. And the applicants have submitted a circulation plan to demonstrate their road hierarchy and pedestrian connectivity. There are, the two main routes are the extension of Canterbury Farms Parkway and the new Collector Road coming in off Baker Place. Those two roads intersect near the center of the development. There are several alleys included in the plan. Most of these are intended to be one-way, according to the applicant. Some may be two-way and then would be wider than the submitted width in the narrative. The applicant has indicated that other alleys may be possible as the development proceeds, depending on how grading works out. This is a high degree of uncertainty for a PRD in staff's opinion and not something that we are in favor of with what is a planned development. The alleys are used in particular near this central intersection. You can see them here to allow those lots facing the Collector Road to not have driveways off the Collector. That is a little bit different layout from what we've seen in other planned developments in the county, which typically have a buffer and then internally accessed lots. These lots would actually front onto the, the parkways but would not have driveways there for, for traffic purposes. There are several concerns with this plan from staff's perspective. Traffic engineering has significant concerns with the entrance layout as proposed with the multiple entrance points and they do have a condition speaking to that. They will require a traffic impact study, but they do feel like the likely outcome of that would be a roundabout being considered as the access point on Baker Place Road, which would change this concept plan fairly dramatically. There's also some concern with the connectivity through the development from Canterbury Farms Parkway. This is not built out all the way to the property line at this point and therefore there's not necessarily that as the, the only viable second access point for this development. We do have a condition proposed that would require a second access point, which could be from one of these southern stubouts or the completion of Canterbury Farms Parkway prior to the plating of 300 lots. Currently, it is in Phase 4 of this development. That would have 442 lots on the ground prior to that connection being made. With the site plan itself, the staff believes that there's a lack of really the design character we're looking for to achieve the requested reduction in setbacks. The applicants did start out asking for six-foot side setbacks across this entire project. Again, on Tuesday, we received some revisions from them. So on Tuesday afternoon, that was revised to have six-foot setbacks only on the alley-loaded lots and seven-and-a-half foot setbacks on the majority of the, the other lots. The one exception being these orange estate lots on this one side of Baker Place Road, which would have 10-foot side setbacks. With the PRD code, the character that is intended to be created or developed to have this reduction in setbacks, the examples given are things like Inville projects or traditional neighborhood development. What we've seen with that as we've kind of started the PRD process is that usually involves some creative layouts, sometimes, not always, including alley-loaded lots. We see pattern books and designs for specific lot layouts, specific house types that help support a vision and work with the plan. So everything kind of works together to create that cohesive project. While the applicant has added alleys to this plan, we don't feel like he has done so in that kind of purposeful way to create that cohesive character and hasn't supported it with the additional elements of the design that could create the pedestrian-friendly kind of livable neighborhood that his narrative says he's going for. Some of those things that we've seen in other projects are the detached or the setback garages, front porches, similar things that encourage that pedestrian activity that back the garages off the street and make it a little more inviting to walk through. So some examples, this is the current architectural style and lot layouts for this development. You can see from the lot layouts, there, there's no setback on the garage. The house types are those that have been built in other neighborhoods in the county by this developer. The alley-loaded lots are a little bit better. They do have the garages behind, so you do get a little bit more of a traditional streetscape with the alley-loaded lots. We do not have examples of the two-unit attached, but that has now been proposed to be removed from the development anyway. This property is in the neighborhood's character area on the future land use map. This area is intended for single-family residential development, a density is between one and four units per acre. The applicant's proposed density is in line with this character area. However, the proposal to have attached units in this development does not meet the intent of the comprehensive plan. In staff's opinion, the, the plan itself hasn't met the standard that we expect of a PRD, which is intended to be a little better designed than maybe your typical R2 neighborhood, and staff is recommending disapproval.
Gentlemen, any questions? I've got one. Could we go back to the plat? Okay, right there. That's fine. Okay. You indicated that, that the additional entrances were, I guess, what, to the, to the, to the south and to the west?
So they've got, so they've got stubouts on, on this south side to some vacant properties to the south. Now, this is actually the property that's currently developing. That may also be a connection point that was brought up in the, the staff report. That property actually did have a condition on it. They, they have to stub out to this Galloway property for a future connection.
So you're looking for an access point that's other than Baker Place? Because it looks like there's another entrance up on Baker Place.
Correct. So the, the condition would, would require them to have a connection to a road. So the condition would require them to have a connection to a road other than Baker Place. And also to keep in mind that if the traffic condition and there are, traffic engineering's feeling is that you're not going to end up with two entrances on Baker Place, it's probably going to end up being one with a roundabout. What they feel like the traffic study and the intersection control evaluation is going to show is the best option.
Would that second entrance on Baker Place help fulfill the spirit of the ordinance until this other property was built out that he doesn't own?
Potentially, it could. Again, if that's valid from traffic engineering. I think currently the phasing plan for this development has that as Area Six, so that's one of the last areas to be developed, so that would require changes to that phasing more drastic than potentially just getting the earlier connections done.
Right. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here this evening?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to come, Mr. Ivey? Would you like to come forward, give us your name and address, and any additional information you'd like us to have?
Yes, sir. Mark Ivey, 730 Stonecrest Lane, Apling, Georgia. A couple of things that I'd like to point out on this. One is, we keep talking about traffic. When you do these traffic studies, it will determine how much traffic is there and what improvements need to be made at intersections. Roundabout is one of the improvements as considered. But as Columbia County has found out, roundabouts are very expensive to build on existing roads. In a number of cases where they looked at roundabouts initially, they went back to traditional intersections. So there's a cost-benefit analysis that's done as part of that, and if the roundabouts are too expensive, you don't have to do them. You can do a different option. I've already been talking with Steve Castle. He's our traffic engineer. He's the one that will be doing the traffic study for us on this project. When he gets to go in on that, we'll have information and be able to determine what's required. I don't see a problem with multiple entrances on Baker Place Road. That's a lot of frontage there, and to say you can only have one entrance doesn't seem right. Traffic will be, if you've got two entrances, then traffic can go out two different ways. You're not concentrating everybody. Last year when we submitted this, we were looking at putting a roundabout there, and we only showed the one connection of Baker Place Road. Traffic engineers said, "Well, we might want you to have two entrances on Baker Place Road." So this go around when we did it and we started looking at the cost of the roundabout, said, "Well, let's just go back and we need to do some entrances on Baker Place Road." So, you know, I don't have a problem with doing the traffic study. We know we have to do that as part of large developments like this. My concern really is with the requirement for the connection to Canterbury Farms Parkway. We can't control when that road will be built. There's about 650 feet of road that's left to be built right there. I can't control when that landowner builds that piece of road. I can control where I build my road. I can get it built when I've platted more than 300 lots, but I can't control what they do. So that was one of our concerns with, one of the conditions on there was the extension of that road. The other one that is talked about is character and not thinking that this neighborhood presents enough character. I honestly don't know what else I can do to add more character. If we submitted this and didn't have alleys, they'd want alleys. If we submitted it and had alleys and the garages setback, there would be something else. We believe what we've got there is a very thoughtful, well-planned neighborhood. It is pedestrian-friendly. There'll be sidewalks everywhere. We've got trails connecting different parts of the neighborhood. We've got a very large amenity package, something that's not seen in a traditional R2-type development. We've got a large pool, clubhouse area. One of the comments we hear in a lot of our neighborhoods now is, "Hey, this is great. We love the pool. We love the playgrounds, but hey, what about my teenagers? They don't have anywhere to go to go play." And so what we're going to do here is put in a larger rec field in this area right here, and there's some buffers that would be left on each side because there's some low areas on each side of it, so it kind of makes a nice area there to kind of nestle that in there so that we can have those recreation fields for the older ones. The other thing, we started back with this. We used a land planner to take a look at what we had done originally and give us some suggestions, and he's the one that really wanted us to focus on this kind of, I guess you'd call it neighborhood park, neighborhood square right here. He says, "You know, in the savanna and coastal areas, we make cemeteries the focal point. I think you really need to incorporate that into a park area, you know, fence it off and then have a nice park area." So that's the feature that you see there. You'll come in, you'll have a park area. That cemetery right now is wooded with hardwood trees, so those would all stay. We would clean up around it and put it around it. So that makes a nice little focal area that most of the neighborhood would drive past. We've got parks scattered here, here, here. I mean, they're just scattered around in different places, and these areas will be used as, some of them dependent upon who that target consumer is. It may have a playground or something in it that caters to that age child. You know, if it's first-time home buyers, then most of the time they have young children, so maybe you put a playground out there that caters to them. If it's more of a larger home that maybe is a move-up for somebody, then those may have a different type of setup in those areas. And so we do have a number of parks that are scattered around. We've saved about a third of this property has been set aside in buffers and green space, and a lot of that is required buffers and wetland areas and things like that that we had to do, but we've got a lot of park areas as well. Those are the main things that we had that I wanted to just point out out of Danielle's commentary.
Now, one thing, I believe before you can plat it, you've got to have access to sewer. Is that be correct?
Yes, sir.
What, where's your sewer tie-in going to be? Because I don't believe you've got sewer on the property.
There's sewer that's been installed right here, and we're working with Maybaum to negotiate that. Should we not be able to get to that, we have another option to take sewer to a different location.
Where would that location?
Working with water and sewer on that.
Okay. You know, the connectivity is one thing, as you know, from coming, you know, in front of this board and Commissioners, is something they try to get two entrances and exits. Is part of your negotiation with the sewer involving the connectivity up there, or is that totally off the table?
It probably will, but what I don't want, I don't want to be penalized for, I don't want to have to be required to do what somebody else was required to do. If I'm sitting here and I'm supposed to stub out to these adjoining properties right here, and I stop it back and don't stub it, and I control the land between the stub and the property line, I've got them cut off. And that's essentially what could happen here if I'm required to, I have to stop at 300 lots because I can't make that connection. I can build to the property line, but this last 650 feet hasn't been built.
I guess my question is, would, I'm assuming you're going to have to reimburse them for some of their cost for sewer?
Correct.
Would they eliminate some of that to allow you money to build that highway? So they would, so you're building with today's dollars as opposed to them building it with dollars five or six or eight years from now?
And that's a negotiation I have to have.
Is that, I mean, is that part of the negotiations, is what I'm asking?
It is, but I don't want, it takes, it ties my hands if the condition's in there and it says, "I have to," therefore, when I get to 300 lots, I'm hung.
So basically, the condition would be put on you as part of the negotiation as opposed to part of the rezon.
Who, clear that up for me? We place a condition based on the recommendation, 300 lots, road has to be built. In order for the road to be built, it has to be property that's either owned by the developer or available through the county. If it's owned by someone else, how can we, if we keep the condition in place and maybe there is a negotiation?
That's his point.
If the negotiation doesn't go through?
Right.
Maybaum still owns the property, and he can't complete that process. Does that shut this whole thing down?
Potentially, however, I think there's a solution that will present itself long before that becomes the problem. Maybaum will be responsible for that, and that conversation has been had with senior staff, and so there is a path forward on that.
Maybaum, not senior staff of the county?
Senior staff at the county.
Okay.
So there is a path forward that should put that timeline on a much quicker path than years from now.
What advantage is it to Maybaum to do that?
They want an approval. But that's a, if I'm in Mr. Ivey's shoes, he can't control that. I understand that. So is 300 a realistic, what's the timeframe on 300 lots?
Your buildup mark is going to be 300 lots, a couple, well, two, three phases is going to be.
Yeah, at the end of three phases, I'll be right at 300 lots. So I'll be putting it in, you know, starting that fourth phase or the end of the third phase, we'll be making, building the road to the property line.
What, I mean, your timeframe?
Timeframe, it depends on sales. You know, 300 lots, you know, you're going to, you're talking probably sell 60 to 80 lots a year, so you're four to five years from the time you start. So these lots, if it's approved, these lots would be delivered in 2022. Going to take the rest of this year into the first of next year to get engineering permits, plans, all that approved, financing lined up, ready to go, good nine months at least to get everything built, platted, approved, and ready to start houses. So spring of '22, first house would be built. But the way these are written is based on platted lots, not actually houses built. So as we, the first phase, let's say, is 140 lots. The second phase maybe is another 80 lots. The third phase, which is a little bit larger phase because it's got the amenity area in it, maybe that's another 130 lots. So at that point, I've triggered the need to make the connection here.
So five years?
Five years, probably.
Mind drawing on the map roughly what phases you're talking about?
Have that drawing in there?
I didn't put it in the PowerPoint.
The first phase is kind of this area right here, and then the second phase is this area right here. Third phase is basically this area. Fourth is this area. We're kind of working that half of the property, because that's the half of the property that we would close first, work that half, and then close the balance and work the rest. If I get to this point and this road, the way the condition's written now, if I get to this point and this road right here is not built, then the way it's written now, I can't plat any more lots.
What's a reasonable compromise in that situation?
Just to require me to have the road built to my property line.
At that point, let's say hypothetically, the connector's not built. Everything falls apart, Maybaum doesn't build it. Would the developer come back and ask for a revision so he can go ahead and plat more lots? Is that the way he'd handle that?
And the chance that that is the situation, I think that would be the reasonable expectation when they'd be coming back to modify that. At this point, I'm not sure that's going to be the situation, but, you know, always could happen.
We owe it to him to consider that and throw it out for discussion and consideration and extend the process out.
Our concern with that is, we come back five years from now, it's a different group of people sitting here, it's a different staff, there's a condition in here. They look at that and say, "Hey, this condition says you have to make this connection. I can't make the connection because I don't own the land that lasts 650 feet." If staff is pretty certain that the road's going to get built to the property line by the adjoining property owner, why not just change the condition to read? I have to, if that road is in place, I have to connect to it at the property line, or I have to have my road extended to the property line.
Seems to me that this would be contingent on the other road being done.
That's kind of what your suggestion.
Does that make any sense to you, Mr. Dunn?
Oh, yeah. I think clearly that's the expectation, is that Mr. Ivey would build it to whatever the connection point needs to be. Realistically, that should be only to the property line. I think that will be the case, but, you know, we can't ensure all tendencies will happen. I think at this point, you know, the expectation that he will be responsible to his property line is fair. I think, you know, whether or not you want to extend that to wherever the current development of Canterbury Farms Parkway, I think that's, you know, an option that you have. You don't have to, of course, make that a requirement, but I think that's, you know, the only way that that becomes a through connection, secondary access point, if that's the connection to provide that secondary access point instead of one or the other, which he would only build to the property line anyways. And, you know, we're talking down here at the south ends, south ends. You know, if those are the, either of those two connection points, those are built to the property line, and they're going to be built to, you know, wherever that connection needs to be into the adjacent property. I think, you know, that's pretty reasonable. Again, I think that road connection will be there at the property line when he's ready to do that.
If, again, if the motion to approve or, let's say, this hypothetically, say we've got a motion to approve, could we add verbiage in there along the lines of these connections as described are not available, planned or built, this condition is null and void?
I don't think I'd go that far. I think you still want to provide the connection. I don't think you would null and void the whole thing. I think you...
I'm just talking about his ability to plat additional lots if that connection is unavailable.
Seems reasonable to me.
Seems reasonable.
That protects you in case the body changes.
That make sense? Gentlemen, any other questions? Got to be some. This is complicated.
I'm just kind of curious, you know, you do the traffic study and they throw a roundabout on you. Is that going to, is that going to be a deal crusher, or is that going to just drastically, you know, change this thing and how it all works?
Last, I asked the county's traffic engineer, Mr. Exley, talking about it. I said, "How much do you think that roundabout right there would cost to build at $2 million?" So yes, that's a deal killer.
What's the distance between the different entrance points, the spine road and the other road on Baker Place Road? How far apart are they?
I'm not sure I understand what you're asking.
Come down Baker Place, I can't draw on mine.
Two entrances, the two entrances on Baker Place. How far apart are they?
Down to there. What's that? How far is that? I mean, that's a pretty good ways, isn't it?
It's a pretty good ways. It is.
Obviously, you've got the other side coming out in there in between.
Probably got 1,800 feet, maybe, something like that.
Quarter mile.
What's the threshold of moving from turn lanes to a signalized intersection and then from a signalized intersection to a roundabout?
Not as easy as that.
Not as easy as that?
He saved me on that one, yeah. No, it's not. A little more complicated than that. There's some calculations and formulas and trip generations that, but again, you've got to look at the bigger picture when you're talking about the potential for the Canterbury Farms Parkway connection. You've got pass-through traffic and, you know, got to calculate all the trips that maybe turning, you know, currently don't make that turn movement because the connection doesn't exist today, that may use Baker Place now that currently don't. So there's a lot more exact science, science that goes into that than just simply, you know, number of lots on this plan and everybody's going to one access point. There's going to be left turns and right turns. People are going to actually go east on Canterbury Parkway. Probably not many, but there'll be some trip generation that will go east on Canterbury instead of out to Baker Place and vice versa.
How many residents do we have off Baker Place Road?
Anybody on the staff. Throw it out there.
A lot.
On which part of Baker Place Road?
And where I'm going with...
Or side or the south side.
Well, where I'm going with this is, it seems like somebody that's coming in late to the dance is getting penalized because there's going to be a lot more people that are generating trips that he's going to get penalized for rolling through Baker Place Road. So, you know, and just me as a businessman, it would be a hell of a gamble to look at a two, two-and-a-half million dollar expense to do this when you've got a whole lot more people that are contributing. And I know there's no way to go back and assess that unless you put a toll booth up, but that...
I'd pay for that two-and-a-half million.
So, you know, I just, I had to... So, you know, I just, I, and, and that's just me talking. That, that, that's the problem I've had with that since the beginning is there, there are a lot of other developers that have contributed to the traffic on Baker Place, and they're.
On that side, that side of I twenty, I mean, I'm, I'm just, most of it goes the other way towards William Few, doesn't it? On the other side of I twenty, the Baker Place Road.
I don't, that's what.
But they go to Fort Gordon that way.
They'll do traffic counts and figure out how many are coming each direction, but the majority of them, I would think, go the other direction. That's sure, and they're working for a work in Fort Gordon.
What drives the cost so high, roundabouts?
Sorry, say that again.
What drives the cost so high on a roundabout?
Land, uh, the amount of land it takes. Um, it's not a small amount of asphalt and curb and gutter and all that.
Probably has to be deeper, doesn't it?
In this case, it's not land because we own the land.
Right.
Not land acquisition that's driving the cost up. It's utility relocations, and it's trying to build this thing along an active road. So you've got to figure out how to divert all this traffic and deal with the traffic the whole time you're building. Just becomes a, a massive project, how to get it built.
And one of the things that bothers me, and when Mark and I were talking, I brought this up. And I don't know the answer to this, but we put the cart before the horse when we're sitting here discussing a vote, and we don't know what the cost is for the road. And he doesn't know what his cost could or could not be. And if we get to a blocking point somewhere down the road, and I know you're not gonna pay two and a half million. So, I mean, to me, it's, we're upside down. I don't know the answer to clarify that, but we are.
The, the opposite, the problem is we can't do a traffic study until we have an approved plan.
Right.
We don't know what the traffic generation's gonna be. You have to have an approved plan sometimes to figure out what the traffic generation. If you, if you look at other projects that's been done in the county, I don't know that, that a roundabout has been used as a major intersection come out of a neighborhood anywhere. Y'all think of any? I, I couldn't think of any.
River, river.
Uh, well, that's, that's within the neighborhood. That's not really coming out of the neighborhood. We've got, we've done several within neighborhoods, but we've never done one as a, as a intersection improvement when the, when the road comes out. You've got neighborhoods out there that'll have just as much traffic as this will have with no left turn lane. I know some of those were, were done ten years ago. That's just what, what's out there. You look at, you take, um, Hereford Farm Road and Crawford Creek and look at the number of houses in there, and it was a simple left turn lane there. Now, that's, there's gonna be road improvements done on Hereford Farm Road that will probably widen the culvert and maybe some different things can be done there. But, you know, to sit here and say, this is definitely gonna wind up being a roundabout, I don't think is a fair statement.
Well, let's move on then. Um, the, uh, there's, there's an additional condition, uh, about, and I was learning this. The revised, a revised conceptual plan, you know, PRD requirement says that there has to be a, a write-up in a conceptual plan. And I know you've been making a lot of changes on the fly, so it's a timing issue for you. Uh, and so in asking questions, we learned that the ideal timeframe is actually Monday, cause it really is tomorrow. Tomorrow's a holiday, Monday. Um, so, um, I just asked a question. Give a little bit of, tend a little bit on this to give Ivies a chance to put that together. So, um, what, what kind of timeframe do you feel? Keep an understanding. We wanna get this turned around for you quickly if that's the case. Uh, we don't wanna draw it out. Uh, what, what do you think is a timeframe?
Pretty simple change to the master plan. I mean, all we're gonna, all we're really doing is the, these, these red lots here, here and here. All these become basically fifty-foot wide lots, the village-type lots. Plan, the plan revision is essentially done there. Narrative gets revised to talk about the setbacks that get approved or in conditions, whatever, tonight. Any other changes that we have to have. So it's a fairly simple, straightforward change. But with the holiday weekend, and then our engineer was on vacation this week, he gets back in the office on Monday and his, you know, his desk is piled high. So probably by about Wednesday, we should be able to turn in a revised narrative and master plan that meets the conditions that were noted on tonight.
Is that fair, Wednesday?
We, we can make that work. We'll, we'll offer that on staff's side.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir.
The only other thing I had was there was one other condition in there that talked about, uh, on traffic, item three, talks about vertical curb and gutters required along planted medians. When we first proposed the landscape medians along the main road, I had to clear this. These, these landscape medians through here, through here, these were not proposed with curb and gutter along those landscape medians. Looked throughout the county, uh, you've got entrances in River Island, you've got entrances in Bartram Trail. You've got different places where the same concept is done where no curb is used. In fact, we've got sections in Crawford Creek that are under construction now with some of these islands similar to what you see here with no curb. Uh, we have preliminary plat that was approved tonight that has islands just like that with no curb. Uh, we would just like to have that condition removed. Um, if we have to put curb in, then I'm gonna have to reduce the number of islands but to offset that cost of that curb.
Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. We may call you back up. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing to, and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chair, I'm gonna, uh, take a shot at this motion. Got some notes here down. Um, gonna make a motion to, to approve with conditions. I'd like to modify a couple of conditions. I need some help on the first one with that. Number three. Modify number three. Development is limiting to plating three hundred lots until the second full access point is provided to Wrightsboro Road or Canterbury Farms Parkway. These connections shall utilize public roads. Uh, if, if these access points are not available.
You know, I just wonder if you need to have something, uh, if these connections are not available, planned or built, this condition is null and void?
I think we, I think we.
This condition is on availability of the connection.
There you go. I like that. This, this, this condition is contingent on the availability of access.
Like that works, Scott.
I just wanna be clear, I, make sure I understand what you're implying. So if, for whatever reason, Canterbury Farms Parkway is not built to the property line, and there is no connection built to the property line at the south end, they don't have to provide the connection at all, or they just have to provide it to.
They could go ahead and plat. They could go ahead and continue developing.
Continue to plat. The requirement that they still have to provide that second connection is still in effect. Okay, I'll make sure I understood.
And again, this may all go away, but, but I think just to be fair, um, we need to let the man be able to, to continue doing business.
Agreed. Um, and then the second revision is, uh, for item eleven. Revising the conceptual plan, giving, given the applicant until Wednesday, eighth, to submit the conceptual plan and narrative addressing the revisions proposed via conditions above. Those are my changes.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Question? Okay, all in favor? Let's, let's go through and make sure we've got everything we've spoken about. Okay, um, any discussion? All in favor? All opposed? Motion passes four one. Ms. Mystery, file RZ two zero zero seven zero four.
Yes, sir. This is a major revision at seven oh three Jones Creek, and it's on point four eight acres. And the current zoning is PUD planned unit development. It's a singly, single-family detached home, and their request is to keep the existing fence to remain. Here's the location, and it is Jones Creek, and it's a second lot on the right. The zoning is PUD, same as the Jones Landing, um, section behind it. Um, there is some R two, ER S one around it. Here's the aerial of the lot. And the plat. These close-up of the aerial, and, um, this particular property has a rear, um, property line of a hundred and thirty feet in length. And the Jones Landing properties behind are all fifty feet wide. So this actually touches four of the lots on the back. This is the, um, light photo. This is a comparison between the two thousand and five aerial and two thousand and nine. Um, in two thousand and five, um, Jones Creek, the property at Jones Creek didn't have a pool, and Jones Landing Court was actually under construction at the time, and the pool was built in two thousand and five. Um, and at that point, the Jones, um, Landing Court homes were completed by two thousand and nine. So following photos are some of the fence, um, photos that can be seen from the rear of the properties. The, the basic fence is six foot high, which is what's, what's allowed, and then the lattice is about one and a half feet on top. Um, that fence was already there for the last fifteen years, and it was only because of some damage by storms recently that the owner had to go back and repair some of those sections. Um, we did have a complaint from one of the neighbors who, um, saw the fence, and, um, code enforcement went out to take some pictures. So, um, these are the photographs. You can see that because of the fence, the lattice sections are actually new. Um, it does stand out a little bit, so, um, we've had conversations with the neighbors at the back. Uh, if they're okay with the, um, owners having, um, that, that wood stained to match the, the brown color of the regular fence, that will make it blend in with the background, and there's, um, good thing is that the, the existing trees are much higher than the fence. That provides additional privacy between the two, between the properties at the front and the back. All of those neighbors have agreed to, um, allow the na- the owner to have access on the property to, to complete that fence and, um, also replace that middle panel that was, um, missing because of the, the trees there. Um, so staff is recommending approval of the major revision to allow fence height with the following conditions, that the lattice portion of the fence be stained a dark color, blend with the existing fence color seen from the Jones Landing side. Um, second one, trim the tree branches where the missing lattice section is on the rear portion, and complete with a lattice fence to match. Um, complete this work within ninety days of the date of the Board of Commissioners meeting if approved. And finally, this, this fence cannot be replaced with a solid fence to the current height of seven point five feet. Any solid portion of fence must be no more than six feet in height. The portion over six foot must be a decorative structure similar to a lattice design. That's, concludes staff recommendation.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Please give us your name and home address.
Uh, it's Sharad Gamani, seven zero three Jones Creek. I've been there about twenty years, and, uh, nothing more to add. I mean, this fence was built about fifteen years ago, has been there existing. It was, uh, fine until recently when we kind of replaced a portion of it when it was falling down, so we just replaced the whole part, and that's, I guess, when it became more noticeable. And that was done, uh, because we were not really quite sure what is gonna be built behind us at that time when you're building the pool. And this is an, uh, an existing one. We'll be absolutely happy to, uh, stain it to match the fence. And, uh, there's a small little portion where the tree comes up. Just trim that and finish it up, and, um, I would be delighted to do it.
Maybe easier to stain the whole fence and that to match.
Yes, sir.
All right. Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Danny Hobbs, six eleven Jones Court Landing. I'm, uh, behind Jones, uh, Landing Court. I'm actually the one that questioned it, uh, not so much as a complaint somewhat, but, uh, I guess I started the ball rolling, so I definitely wanna step up. I wanna, uh, be a, a silent man to Dr. Gamani there, but, uh, we moved in three years ago and just wanted to revitalize our backyard, which we did. Uh, and, and the fence was not there then, the, the lattice part of it, so we were not aware that it was ever there. Uh, but at any rate, the concern was we invested a lot of money in the backyard of our backyard, and, and this went up, and it just concerned us, the, the different color and the, uh, not great workmanship in it by leaving some, some lattice work empty there. So that's kind of why it came up. Uh, we just wanted to try to make it blend in, and obviously it, it doesn't very well. So that was our concern with, with, uh, our investment in what our property eventually may be, and just to have that there, that was our concern, so. Uh, and certainly, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm in agreement with, with him willing to do that and just kind of get it up to. But it would be nice to have it stained, uh, to match, so that's, just wanted to add that to it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it.
All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ twenty dash zero seven four with conditions.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? To approve carries five zero. Ms. Boltie, got one variance tonight, file VA two zero zero seven zero one.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to section ninety dash ninety-eight. That's the list of lot and structure requirements for a property at forty twenty-nine Washington Road. And this is the location of the property on the north side of Washington Road, um, between Washington Road and railroad tracks. Uh, currently zone C two, general commercial, as are, um, all the other properties in the immediate area. Um, properties on the other side of the railroad tracks are, um, more residential in nature. This is the aerial of the site. Um, you see, it's at, the building, uh, sits quite close to Washington Road. Um, this property has been vacant for a while. Uh, we do have, the applicants are proposing to, to do the repairs, bring it back up to code and be able to reuse it as a commercial building, um, which is something we like to see rather than the vacant building. Um, since it has been vacant, however, they do trigger all the requirements for non-conforming, um, lots, uh, which means they need the, the variance to the setbacks in order to be able to reuse this property. Uh, this is the plat of the property, uh, that was submitted. Uh, you see, it does not actually have a front setback measurement on it. Um, we did have a condition on this, uh, request to have a survey submitted. We actually saw a draft of that survey earlier today. Um, so that is in progress. Um, the front setback is eighteen feet from the right of way for the existing building. And this is the existing site. And just so you can see where it sits relative to Washington Road. And staff is recommending approval, um, with the conditions, again, the front setback to be reduced to meet the current building location, that is the eighteen feet from the right of way, and the survey, um, once finalized, to be submitted to the planning department, um, within thirty days of approval. Um, we do wanna be clear that no structures or additions can be closer to Washington Road than that setback line. Um, it is a, a state route and a arterial higher traffic route. Um, DOT doesn't particularly like front setback reductions on the road, so we don't want them to continue coming forward beyond where they already are. Um, and the rear setback would be reduced to zero feet with this variance.
Thank you, ma'am. Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Start with your name and home address.
Yes, sir. My name's Morgan Lawson, uh, two five nine A Kirby Avenue, over there in Grove Town. Um, I've been speaking to Ms. Danielle, Danielle a lot about it. I got the survey coming out tomorrow. He's gonna have the finalized one, so I'll be able to get that sent to you. Um, aside from that, we don't plan on going any further up. We do have to redo the plumbing in the front, but that's something we already spoke with you about. Um, aside from that, we're hoping everything, we can get the ball rolling, cause right now we're just kind of sitting there paying a mortgage we can't do nothing with.
Okay.
So, we're hoping to get it done soon, and sorry for the appearance. I just came from work, so.
Worries. Um, is it gonna be a restaurant?
Uh, no, sir. We're actually opening up another audio shop. Um, we run Lawson's Car Audio on Gordon Highway. Uh, we're trying to expand over to Columbia County now, and it's gonna be a home audio and car audio shop.
Good.
Aside from that, that's about.
Wilder?
Thinking, you know, the, 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 the setback is, is so small now because when the original. Thinking, you know, the, the, the setback is, is so small now, because when the original sidetracked, before they added all that on, Washington Road was too lean. You know, that's, the, the road came to the building, not the other way around.
Yeah, luckily, we actually don't really need to use too much of the front area, just because we got the parking on the side, we also have the parking in the rear, we have an agreement with CSX.
So, you're going to use the whole building, though, I mean, you're going to have like a showroom and then an installation area?
Yes, sir, to the right of it where the patio used to be, we're hoping to build a installation bay next to it with the door being in the rear, so you can't actually, it won't be visible from Washington.
Can't face Washington Road with a, with a roll-up door.
Yes, sir.
The feed store. Yep, it did.
I used to get a sausage dog and beer when I was in high school.
All right, gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
This is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions, file VA 200701, reducing the front and rear setbacks at 4029 Washington Road.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, with conditions?
I had said that.
With conditions? Clean my ears out. Gentlemen, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries 5-0. Would like to take this note, I, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize our incoming commissioner from District 2, Commissioner-elect Don Skinner, we appreciate you being here, would you like to approach the microphone and bestow any praise or, or discipline on us? All right, thank you, sir. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
Just have a happy fourth.
Everybody be safe. We have a little public left, any public comments? If seeing none, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to adjourn carries 5-0 at 7:12 PM. Next meeting is July 16th, 2020, at 6:00 PM in these chambers.